Today in our program, from wherever you are. SIGA is an independent nonprofit research and public policy institution that's based in Istanbul, Turkey. It's affiliated with Istanbul Zayim University. Its mission is to conduct high-quality research and analysis, educate the public and policymakers, train experts, and propose novel ideas and policy recommendations regarding global policies and relations impacting the Islamic world and the development and progress of Muslim societies. In the past five years, we've organized ten international conferences and over 150 seminars, webinars, book discussions, workshops, and symposiums. Today, we are pleased to announce the premiere of our new activity called Diwaniya, or Town Hall Meeting. It gives me an immense and great pleasure to have with us today in our first Diwaniya, the former Prime Minister of Pakistan, His Excellency, Mr. Imran Khan. He really needs no introduction, but the most striking thing about him is his ability to inspire millions of people, not only in his nation, but across the Muslim world and beyond. Perhaps no leader has been able to galvanize that many people in the streets across Pakistan since the founder of the state, Muhammad Ali Jinnah. Today, we will ask the Prime Minister questions that will focus on international affairs, global politics, the Muslim world, and many other topics. But before we start our questions, I would like to thank our audience here who come from across the Muslim world, who would also participate in the questioning of questioning the Prime Minister. But before we do that, I would like to introduce my colleague and co-moderator, Mr. Uweis Khan, who is a research fellow here at SIGA. He will explain the format of today's program and how it will be conducted.
Assalamualaikum and welcome to everybody. This is our inaugural Diwaniya event. It is an event inspired by Muslim tradition, in which public leaders bring together scholars, public policy experts, and students, and engage in an open, on-the-record dialogue about issues of mutual concern. So today, I'm honored and esteemed to have all of these very bright minds and thought leaders from the Muslim world here gathered together with Mr. Imran Khan. The format of the session will be that we have collected a number of questions from online and from other platforms, and we have grouped these in fifteen odd categories. And each category, we'll ask a question. It will take sixty seconds approximately on the questioner's behalf, and then we will have a back-and-forth conversation with His Excellency. Each question, we hope to give an average of five minutes in response. So I welcome everybody, and without further delay, let's jump right in. Dr. Sami?
Thank you, Uweis. Again, it's five minutes per question, including the questions and the answers, so we finish in the time that we're proposing, which is about ninety minutes. First of all, let me welcome again, Mr. Prime Minister. Thank you so much for joining us. We really are delighted here to have you with us. The first question and the first segment involves world and regional politics, and the first question is about Russia, the United States, and the war in Ukraine. Some international scholars believe that the West, particularly the United States, has goaded Russia in its invasion of Ukraine. They argue that ever since the fall and disintegration of the Soviet Union in 1991 and up until perhaps 2017, we had a unipolar world, which the United States exploited in order to expand NATO, turn as many countries in Europe to become Western liberal democracies under its tutelage, and further weaken Russia. This aggressive US strategy, they argue, has provoked Russia and is considered the main reason for the war in Ukraine. On the other hand, the majority of Western leaders argue that the main reason for invading Russia is an aggressive Russian policy, where Russian leader Vladimir Putin wants to restore Greater Russia and subject some of the former Soviet satellites to Russia's rule and dictates. You've been a keen observer of world politics and dealt directly with world leaders. Which argument do you believe, and how do you see the end of this brutal conflict?
Thank you very much for inviting me to this, your first, I believe, inaugural session on questions and answers. I want to thank SIGA for honoring me today, and I hope I'll be able to answer all your questions. Now, this is the whole Ukraine-Russian conflict. I happen to be visiting Moscow on the day when Russia decided to go into Ukraine. So, you know, I had a meeting that same day with President Putin, so I know the Russian point of view. And the Russian point of view is that we had repeatedly indicated to the Western countries that we would not allow NATO to come right onto our doorsteps. And their argument is that, just like the United States would not own Russia or all their weaponry. So the conflict from the Russian point of view has been triggered out of fear, that if NATO moves into Ukraine, which they felt should have been demilitarized or should have been neutral, they felt that then the security of Russia was at stake. And the other thing was that President Putin kept saying that, in the past, Western leaders, American leaders, had all told him that, look, this will not happen, and they had given him assurances. And so unfortunately, he said that these assurances are broken, and hence the conflict. The Western point of view is very straightforward, that this is Russian aggression. It's invasion, it's coming into their... they invaded a country, and they're blaming Russia for all the destruction that is taking place due to war. So now, my point of view, I basically feel that countries like Pakistan, we should not become partisan in this. You know, we should not pass value judgments on this, or moral judgments on this. Reason: I don't feel that our countries should get involved in conflicts that don't affect us, and I'm talking about developing world, countries like Pakistan, which have 100 billion people vulnerable, almost 50 million people below the poverty line, 50 million people above the poverty line. And so when we make moral judgments in conflicts, it comes at a cost for countries like us. So, for instance, we would have wanted cheap oil from Russia. We would have wanted wheat from, 2 million tons of wheat from Russia. A gas pipeline was arranged with a Russian company. So all that gets affected the moment you take sides. And, you know, our neighbor India, which is a part of the Quad, which is a strategic military, economic military alliance with the United States, India abstained in this because they too felt that they needed cheap oil from Russia. And what this conflict has done, post the COVID situation, where already there was a commodity supercycle, and this conflict has raised energy prices to the level, which is causing a lot of problems in Europe. We all know that in Europe, they are suffering from gas shortage and energy prices spike. But in the developing world, it has caused massive problems in our balance of payments because it has just... the oil prices going up, I know they're coming down now, but that caused an enormous problem for countries like us. So therefore, my take on this, there are two points of view. We would like to abstain, my country, we would like to abstain in this, but I do feel that this conflict has caused massive problems all over the world.
Thank you, thank you very much for your answer. The next question is about China, and Uweis will ask that question.
Keeping with our theme about world and regional politics, we'd like to stick with talking about the great powers. For the past three decades, the power of China has been on a steady rise economically, militarily, and technologically, among other spheres. It has certainly become a world power. Pakistan has also been one of its major partners, not only economically, but also geopolitically. How will Pakistan maneuver between China and the United States, particularly in growing US pressure on Pakistan to take sides? How do you envision the role of China in a multipolar world and in competition with the US?
Well, Uweis, the problem is that, you know, when we are countries, again, I sort of falling from your first question, when we are weak countries, we developing countries are pushed to take sides. And I feel that Pakistan should not take any sides, I'm talking about our country. Because, you know, why do we have to take sides? Pakistan should have good relationship with both China and with the United States. Similarly, I feel with Russia and the United States. For instance, that's the policy of India. I must say that I've always admired the way India remained non-aligned during the Cold War. I thought it was a sensible thing to do. I mean, when you become part of a bloc, that means that the whole other bloc is excluded from you. And of course, you know, great powers do put a lot, enormous pressure on you to take sides. So let me first say that China-Pakistan relationship goes back a long time, sixty years, and China has been what we call always a friend in need. China has stood by Pakistan, you know, whether it is on international forums, on politics. For instance, Kashmir is an issue, a United Nations resolution on Kashmir stating that there should be, there should have been a plebiscite in Kashmir for the people of Kashmir to decide whether they wanted to be with India or Pakistan. And that right was not given to them. But no other, hardly any other country stands with us. China has always stood with us, and I must say, Turkey has stood with us. But you know, other, even Muslim countries, despite knowing the injustice going on in Kashmir, just like in Palestine, they do not stand with us, which is, by the way, one of the reasons I feel that when we are told to take sides in a conflict like Ukraine, why should we? When things that are important to us, the Western countries don't take a stand or moral stand on it. And so I feel that, so I think we should be non-aligned in this, we should be neutral, we should be friendly with both. But about China, I have seen the development of China in the last thirty years, and I must say, what they have achieved is there is no precedence in human history of what China has achieved. They have lifted 700 million people out of poverty in the last thirty-five, forty years. It's never been done in human history. And when you go to China, the rate of their development is phenomenal, and I just do not think that Western countries will be able to compete with them. Because, you know, the electoral politics, it has its limitations. I mean, the amount of maneuvering, a democratic government which comes about through electoral politics, you have a lot of limitations. In China, what is considered national interest, the people stand with the government, and what they managed to do, like for instance, shifting populations, I don't think that happened in Western countries. So I just don't think that the other countries will be able to stop the growth of China. Their system of meritocracy, I visited China and I saw the way they bring up all their talent, and then their single focus, long-term planning. I haven't seen such long-term planning in most countries. Certainly, countries like us, which every five years are supposed to have elections, so very rarely governments plan beyond five years, but in China, they have just planned so far ahead, and then they single-handedly pursue their goals. And I feel that, you know, China is going to be the... I think it will leave everyone behind.
Thank you very much, respected chairman. I cannot leave the issue of China aside as a Muslim think-tank and not raise the plight of the Uighur Muslims. On a lot of issues, Muslims around the world are concerned about the events that are happening in Xinjiang. Pakistan has been a champion of Muslims all around the world. How do we hold both of this in tension?
Well, let me say that, you know, the Pakistan-China relationship is such that whatever the issues of Uighurs, we have always, the Chinese have always preferred to speak behind closed doors. They're very, you know, their system is such that they hate talking about sensitive issues like Uighurs in public. So we've had discussions with them, and they give us a different side of their story, and there are always two sides of the story. And so, you know, the conversations I've had with the Chinese government on Uighurs, we have always, knowing the sensitivity they feel, we've kept that behind closed doors.
Thank you so much. I want to now ask one of our members here to direct the next question. Let me introduce Dr. Mubin Shah, who is the head of the Istanbul Kashmir House. Dr. Mubin Shah?
In the name of Allah, Excellency, it's a pleasure to talk to you directly today. Excellency, this is Dr. Mubin Shah, Kashmiri in exile. As far as we can tell, in its hour of need, Pakistan has all but abandoned Kashmir in everything but territory. What is your NPTI solution for the people of Kashmir? When in power, how would you maneuver support for Kashmiri resistance movement, taking Ukraine as a model within Muslim world, with OIC as the biggest support factor to impose sanctions and back resistance of Kashmiris militarily? In these challenging times, what is Pakistan's solution to grave issues faced by Muslims in South Asia, particularly in India? Excellency, I thank you.
Well, Mubin, you know, when I was the Prime Minister, we took a very strong stand for Kashmir. And I think you would have known that we have, on every, my government at least, on every international forum, we spoke about the people of Kashmir, especially after 5th August 2019, when they took away the statehood of Kashmir, which was against all international laws. It was against the United Nations Security Council Resolution, which clearly stated that, you know, Kashmir would have a special status until they were given their right of self-determination. So without giving them the right of self-determination, they took away the statehood. So we, you know, we stood with the people of Kashmir, and we broke all relationship with India. And that has remained up to this point. It's the case now that we actually have broken relationship with India, and at every international forum, we have tried to put pressure on them. Now, apart from that, what else can we do? Give them moral support, support them everywhere, but when you say, I don't know what you mean, I mean, do you think we should militarily go into Kashmir, which is obviously clearly not an option? They are two nuclear-armed countries. It's not a Ukraine-type situation. Pakistan and India, the moment there is a conflict, I think there is always a danger that it will go out of hand. You know, in Ukraine, for instance, if Ukraine had nuclear weapons, firstly, this might not have happened, this conflict, but had it happened, the whole world would have been petrified of a nuclear war. So therefore, with Pakistan, India, military solutions are not an option. Short of that, what else can we do? We'll raise it on every forum, and it has cost Pakistan quite a lot by breaking away all diplomatic relationships with India since 5th August 2019.
So what kind of words of hope can you give the people of Kashmir? Because this is a very bleak picture right now.
It's, you know, circumstances always change. I am a firm believer that, you know, you just keep pressure. People of Kashmir have patience, they have given tremendous sacrifices, almost, what, 100,000 Kashmiris have been martyred in the last thirty years or thirty, just around about forty years. But you know, they are resolute, they're not giving up. And this will, sooner or later, the Indian government will have to restore their rights. At the moment, the people of Kashmir are just deprived of all rights. And what the Indian government hopes to do is to alter the balance, the demography of Kashmir by settling in non-Muslims into non-Kashmiris and Muslims into Kashmir, and what they hope is that eventually, the balance will be changed, and when they have elections or plebiscite, there will be more non-Muslims who will then vote for India. So this is the game plan for India, but it's not working because the people of Kashmir have not given up, and I think the settlers find it very difficult to move into Kashmir in a hostile environment. And I really believe, I am a firm believer, that Kashmiris will get their independence, their right of self-determination.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next question is about Pakistan's nuclear policy, and it would be asked by Dr. Nazar Krikish, who is the director of the Bayan Center for Studies from Libya. Dr. Nazar?
Thank you. As the only Muslim state that has nuclear weapon, can Pakistan potentially provide a nuclear cover for the Muslim world? In other words, do you think Pakistan should put on other nuclear power nations notice that they cannot use nuclear weapons against other Muslim states because that would also constitute aggressive against Pakistan? For example, can Pakistan give nuclear cover against Israel, potential use of nuclear weapons against its neighbors? Is it strategic in the area or just restricted for Pakistan this nuclear war?
Well, at the moment, first of all, let me tell you, I'm not a great fan of nuclear weapons because I do believe in settling your issues. I'm not also a great fan of military solutions. For instance, I would never try and solve issues militarily, but for me, it is basically for defense. I mean, if someone is going to take away your freedom, then that's when, you know, you fight for it and you use military. So the Pakistan military, the nuclear program, has always been a defensive one because India is seven times the size of Pakistan, it has huge resources now, and the people in Pakistan have always been threatened by the idea that a bigger neighbor would just overwhelm the country. So remember, we've had three conflicts with India, and this was from 48, 1965, and then 1971. And so ever since Pakistan's had the nuclear program, we actually have had no conflict. So it gives the country of 220 million people security when you're facing a neighbor which is 1.3 billion people. And hence, it's, you know, it's a nuclear program for Pakistan is essentially defensive.
So just to clarify this point, if in the future, you were Prime Minister and a Muslim country was threatened with nuclear weapons, will you take action or just stand by?
Well, you know, I can't say right now that Pakistan would be able to stand up for other Muslim countries right now. I just think that, you know, the idea of, you know, I again repeat, the idea of a nuclear war, you know, the idea that you will actually be face-to-face with another country with nuclear weapons is beyond my imagination. And I say this simply because, you know, nuclear war is the end of the world. You must remember, it's a suicide attack on the world because I don't think the world will be able to sustain or survive a nuclear holocaust. So, you know, the answer to the question is simply that there are other ways that the Muslim countries can put pressure on the injustices that are going against the Muslim countries, and that is through the OIC. Unfortunately, right now, the OIC has not really fulfilled its role as an organization that would stand up for Muslim causes. Unfortunately, you know, there are too many self-interests, there is not enough, governments are not enough representative in the OIC. In other words, they don't represent the public opinion. So the public opinion all over the Muslim world is the same. They feel the pain of what is happening, injustices in the Muslim countries. But when you have governments that have no connection with the public opinion, then they're not bothered what the public opinion thinks, and hence you find very few countries which have spoken out for Muslim causes. Because only those countries where you have Muslim democracies, where you have governments representing the public opinion, only they speak out against the injustices, say Palestine and Kashmir and elsewhere.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our second segment, and this is a good segue to talk about the Muslim world and the Ummah. I have with us Mr. Naime Jina from the Center, who is the director of the Afro-Middle East Center in South Africa. He's joining us online.
Thank you, Uweis. Excellency, in many of your speeches, you have equated Western intervention in Iran to how the West interferes in the internal affairs of Pakistan as well. And of course, you know, many of us believe that there's a personal issue here for yourself also. Since the 1979 Iranian revolution, Iran adopted a kind of policy of independence, neither east nor west, as they called it, and coupled that, in fact, with hostility towards foreign powers, promoting what it regarded as its version of an Islamic state. That country, Iran, has now lived under sanctions for forty-three years, almost. Sanctions, destabilization, et cetera, with the objective, of course, of regime change in Iran. From a Pakistani perspective, how do you view Iran? A hostile power, a potential strategic partner, a competitor? And I ask this question particularly in light of your earlier comments about non-alignment, I think, which is a very valuable articulation. And how exactly is Western pressure on Iran similar to that on Pakistan?
Well, in Iran, during Mohammed Mossadegh's premiership, and his government was removed, and this is now documented, was removed by the CIA. And it was because an independent-minded Prime Minister came and took over in Iran and wanted to make policies for the interest of the people of Iran. And so we all, you know, we all know what happened to him, you know, there was this, first of all, there was this campaign, propaganda campaign against him in the media, then it was the opposition parties were paid to do demonstrations against the government of Prime Minister Mossadegh, and then, and then his own party members were given money to change party affiliation. And eventually, it was the final was the army which removed him. So it was a very similar pattern followed when my government was dismissed. But, you know, let me just talk about Iran. I find that it is most important for a country to live with dignity and self-respect. I mean, that for me is the most important thing, you know, we Muslims, you know, our oath with the Almighty is la ilaha illallah. There is no God but Allah. It gives us dignity, self-respect. We, you know, we are not supposed to bow in front of anyone but the Almighty. And the Muslim countries, you know, when they become subservient or when they become client states, when they lose their dignity, you know, unfortunately, in Pakistan, we have suffered from this. I found the Pakistan's foreign policy, vast majority of the people of Pakistan have found it very undignified because we have relied on aid and we stretch our hands and we get money, or we fight other people's war, and then, you know, we participate, a lot of our own people die in this, and we do it for foreign aid or US dollars. And I think, you know... And I think, you know, it has consequences for a society. Number one, the society never learns to stand on its own feet. Because only when you stand on your own feet, do you realize your strength. But when you're always having crutches of foreign aid, just because, you know, you're trying to serve someone else's foreign policy objectives, you lose your dignity. And for me, the people of Iran might have suffered, but you know, they haven't lost their dignity. They, you know, we will disagree with, you know, maybe what their worldview is, we might disagree with their worldview of Islam, but, you know, you cannot disagree with them standing for their sovereignty. So, you know, I admire that about them.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Our next question comes from Maryam Khan, who is a PhD candidate at Istanbul Sabatine Zaim University and also a research associate at CIGA. Maryam, are you there?
Salaam alaikum. It's really a pleasure to sit in front of you. I am personally a voter of PTN and ALBEVER. My question is regarding Afghanistan. It's been after two decade-long war of US against Afghanistan, Taliban have turned to power now, which wasn't supported by leftists in Pakistan because they saw them as a source of terrorism. Now, we Pakistanis are again facing a wave of terrorism and Islamabad is on high alert. So how do you see the Taliban in Afghanistan? And how, do you think that the current security threat which Pakistan is facing now has something to do with Afghan Taliban also? Also, you have supported a lot of, you know, laws like blasphemy law and religion-based laws, but on the same time, you have criticized a lot of religious parties which were in the coalition. So how do you see the role of religion in the politics? Thank you so much.
Okay, so first of all, you must differentiate between the Afghan Taliban and the Pakistan Taliban. The Afghan Taliban are completely different. You know, their aims and objectives are completely different to the TTP, which is the Pakistan Taliban. Who were the Pakistan Taliban? When the Afghan jihad was conducted from the soil of Pakistan, it was conducted to what was called the tribal areas of Pakistan or FATA. Now, these were areas adjoining the Afghan border. And all the sort of incursions into Afghanistan by the Mujahideen were from the tribal area. And a lot of the fighters also from Pakistan were from the tribal areas. And they were Pashtuns, which were the Pakistani, you know, you must remember, Afghanistan is fifty percent Pashtun. And two-thirds of Pashtun live in Pakistan. And most of them along the border, the eastern border of Afghanistan. So therefore, there was a lot of Pashtun sympathy for the Afghan jihad. So hence, from the tribal area, the border joining Afghanistan, that's where the fighters used to go in and the Mujahideen used to operate. So when come nine eleven, Afghanistan gets invaded by the Americans. Now Pakistan government took the stand, which I opposed, we should have stayed neutral. They started supporting the US war on terror. And so the same people who had been fighting jihad against the Soviets, because there were foreign invaders, now were told that because it's the US, if you fight against them, it's terrorism. So they turned against the Pakistan government. And so what we had was, in tribal areas, the people turning against the Pakistan government, and they were called the TTP, the Pakistan Taliban. And so there were two different things. Afghanistan Taliban were not connected with them. I mean, they were connected vaguely, but not really. There was no real connection with them. So what happened was that after Kabul fell to the Taliban last August, the Pakistan Taliban were then asked by the Afghan Taliban to go back into Pakistan. And unfortunately, that was a great time for us to, my government was already negotiating with them so that we would do a resettlement of these people. Because there were about forty thousand people which were moving into Pakistan, amongst them about five to ten thousand fighters, but their families too. So unfortunately, when my government went, the eye was taken off the ball and the new government and the new, and the setup, the military establishment did not pay enough attention to what was happening with the resettlement of the Taliban coming in. And so therefore, we have this wave of terrorism coming in now. And this is all along the, what was the former FATA, the former tribal areas, because they've got merged into Pakistan. So we have a wave of terrorism in Pakistan right now, and this needs to be dealt with before it goes out of hand. Now I come to what you're talking about, religious parties and religious laws. Look, let me first tell you about the blasphemy law. The blasphemy law was not made by Pakistan, it was made by the British when they were ruling India. And the idea of the blasphemy law was that if one religious community, and remember, there were multi-religious communities living in villages, there were Hindus, there were Sikhs, there were Muslims, there were Christians. So if one religious community said something which was derogatory against another religious community of a sacred entity, so there would be riots, there would be a lot of people killed. So the British then brought in this blasphemy law that you were not allowed to say anything derogatory about any religious entity of any other religion. That's how it came about to stop riots. So therefore, rather than there being lynching crowds and litching mobs going on and killing people who thought that their religion blasphemy had been committed against them, now it was an offense, so you had to actually go to court to prove that. So that was to stop mob violence, lynching crowds. So Pakistan basically inherited the policy. And in Pakistan, it has been, it makes sense because we have different religions here. And we have had in the past, when someone thinks that our religion has been blasphemed, there've been more violence. You know, there've been people lynched. And this now is an offense in Pakistan because you have to prove that it's blasphemy. And for that, you have to go to court.
Very well, thank you, thank you very much. Our next question is about Turkey. And we have with us Dr. Yasin Aktaoui. Dr. Aktaoui is a professor at Bayezid Yıldırım University, and also he is a former member of parliament and widely known here in Turkey. Dr. Aktaoui.
First of all, thank you very much for sharing your very, very valuable perspective with us. And thanks to CIGA for gathering us together in this platform. For the past two decades, Turkey has become an important and rising power, not only in its region, but also in the Muslim world. I think you can share this idea, this belief. The relationship between Pakistan and Turkey is the lasting legacy of anti-Islamism. The story is well-known, as you know. Muslims in the subcontinent supported the Turkish people with their bodies and wealth during the height of colonialism. But in reality today, the Turkish-Pakistan relationship is a failure from many angles. The historical nostalgia has been manipulated by NATO interests, as it was dominated and controlled by the military through the Cold War years. Today, it has resulted in nothing tangible. No visa-free travel, no free trade agreement, no military alliance, no free technology transfer agreement, no people-to-person cooperation, et cetera. Now my question is coming. Do you feel Pakistan has benefited from Turkey's rise and it's so, how? And do you envision a strategic partnership beyond rhetoric between the two important Muslim states? And lastly, what other Muslim states do you see as strategic partners to Pakistan? Thank you.
Well, first of all, let me say that there's a people-to-person relationship between the people of Turkey and Pakistan. And this, again, what you quite rightly pointed out in history, was at a time when when in Turkey, the colonial, the Western powers or European powers were about to take over in the twenties or early, late nineteen-nineteens and nineteen-twenty. At the time, you were fighting, a lot of the Muslims of India and what is now Pakistan sent, collected a lot of money and, you know, they gave, they were standing with the people of Turkey. And I think that's what is remembered in the Turkish mindset. So the relationship is very deep. When I became the prime minister with President Erdogan, I had a very good relationship and we were trying our best to further our contacts. I was only in power for three and a half years. And in that time, unfortunately, Corona came and the two years were basically, one and a half years were lost in the coronavirus. And so for our first year, we were sort of, we had a bankrupt country, so we were trying to be solvent. So basically, in the last couple of years, we were trying to form what you call trade relationship. We had a committee formed by the president, dealing with a committee formed by me in Pakistan to further our contacts, our relationship. It was quite a relationship which covered a wide area of things. And unfortunately, that, you know, when my government was removed, we were just deepening our relationship and there were various political crises which kept coming on the way. And we, you know, we, but I do feel that for the future, the relationship with Pakistan and Turkey will grow. Look, Pakistan has gone through a bad period in the last thirty years. We have, you know, we lost our momentum of growth. Pakistan just did not live up to its economic potential. We had two terrible governments of, two political families who ruled us for thirty years. And they're, and yeah, well, they're still here, they've been in power for eight months. And they have basically run this country into the ground. So Pakistan in the sixties was one of the fastest-growing economies in the world. And especially in the developing world, Pakistan was given as an example. Lot of countries followed Pakistan's model in the sixties, Malaysia, South Korea, you know, we were considered a model. And as I said, unfortunately, in the last three decades, we lost that momentum because, you know, we had very poor governance. So looking ahead, I think Pakistan and Turkish relationship has tremendous potential. And we were discussing, there were a lot of mutual areas which we could benefit each other. Because there's a lot of strengths in Pakistan, which are still, we have potential, but we haven't realized them. But in Turkey, you know, we were working out on how mutually we could benefit each other through trade.
Thank you very much. I can't leave this without mentioning that you and President Erdogan, and I believe also the President of Iran, were talking about how to confront Islamophobia. Say in one minute, what project do you think the three countries should embark upon to confront this rising problem of Islamophobia?
You see, Islamophobia, let me just give you a quick, I'm just going to be very quick about this. This all started when the Iranian revolution took place. There was a fear in the Western countries that all Muslim countries would be taken over by Islamic revolutions. And so they divided the Muslim world between moderates and fundamentalists. And in nineteen eighty-nine, when Salman Rushdie, sometime then when Salman Rushdie wrote that book, Satanic Verses, there was a wave of anger in the Muslim countries. The West could not understand why were the Muslims so upset? Because they, especially Europeans, their idea of religion or the way they treat, for instance, Jesus Christ, is completely different to the way Muslims love and respect and revere our holy prophet, Muhammad, peace be upon him. And they couldn't understand this. And the Muslim world never explained to them why were they so upset? And so that added to this suspicion about Islam. And then, of course, nine eleven took place. So after that, Islam was equated with terrorism. For somehow, suicide attacks were only by Muslims because we were supposed to be these radical people. And unfortunately, the worst role was played by the heads of Muslim states. Everyone, rather than trying to explain to the Western countries that, look, radicals, moderates, and liberals are in every human community. There is no such thing as radical Islam or Islamic terrorism. You know, these were terms given to create the impression that somehow terrorism and radicalism was connected with Islam. And the Muslim heads of state was so keen to become all moderates and liberals, just to please the Western countries, they'd never explain to them that there is only one Islam and that is of Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And unfortunately, we never, ever helped fight Islamophobia. We never, by never explaining anything to them. So Muslims in Western countries suffered a lot after nine eleven. Because as I said, Islam was equated to terrorism. And there was this radical Islam, you know, Muslims kept saying, we're all against radical Islam. But how was the man in the West ever supposed to understand the difference between moderate and liberal Islam? So they would, they thought of all of Muslims as a sub-terrorist. So now what needs to be done is that OIC must take the premier role in this to explain to Western countries, they must form a body of scholars which will be able to speak to the Western countries in their own language. So to convince, make them understand, you know, the differences, what causes problems between, and what causes Islamophobia. And I feel that can be done. And I also feel that, you know, Al Jazeera, TRT, channels that can sort of give the Islamic version to the Western countries are very important. They need to have a material which will explain to the Western countries about Islam. Majority of the people in the West do not understand Islam. And the problem is that it can be manipulated by those people who are anti-Islam. So they can manipulate this ignorance against us. And that's why it is very important communication through media, and OIC should take responsibility for this.
Thank you so much. I want to remind all the participants that we need to move faster because the time of the chairman is quite precious. And the next person we have is Nasr Zaman Naim. He is the head of the Bangladeshi Student Association in Turkey and also PhD student at Istanbul Sabatine Zaim University. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for giving me the opportunity. As we are talking about, as we are talking of the Ummah today, let's turn to an issue closer to home. As we all know, that both Bangladesh and Pakistan contains a significant proportion of Muslim population in the world today. But it is unfortunate and it is apparent that the relationships between Bangladesh and Pakistan are not good. So why is this the case, in your opinion? Also, we are talking, we often speak about the brotherly relationships between Muslim-majority countries, but all of those talks are actually empty. So as a politician, what is your vision regarding Bangladesh? And also as a politician, what would you suggest as a way forwards to improve the relationship between Bangladesh and Pakistan in near future? Thank you.
Well, first of all, the reason why our relationship has not grown or improved is because of sadly, the events of nineteen seventy, seventy-one. When the ruling party, the party that should have been given government, the majority party was not given, you know, was not allowed to have its mandate and form government in Pakistan. And that led to the breakup of Pakistan and the formation of Bangladesh. But unfortunately, the events that followed, the military operation which followed, that created that deep, what should I say, not animosity, but it created that distance between the two countries because of the suffering which took place because of the military action. So my government, when I reached out to the Bangladesh Prime Minister and we... So my government, when I reached out to the Bangladesh Prime Minister and I also invited her to Pakistan, but the relationship is not what it ought to be. It should be a much better relationship. There've been periods in which the relationship seems to have thawed, but for some reason, the relationship has not grown. But I do agree with you that, you know, you know, as two of the, probably the countries with the biggest population, Muslim populations, we should have far, far better relationship than it is right now.
Thank you very much. Our next question is about Palestine, and it will be asked by Mr. Jalal Shaeib, who is a senior research associate at the Center for Islamic Global Affairs. Jalal?
Thank you, Doctor. Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikumsalam.
My question is regarding the Palestinian cause and the normalization with Israel. And as you know, all of you, the cause is witnessing now the worst days. If we look back to the history, we see each state in the Muslim world which normalized its relationships with Israel found for itself like an excuse under the big name, umbrella, the real politik. Some of them make the excuse of to avoid foreign pressures, some of them to get back their own land, like Egypt and Camp David, some of them to size another land, like what happened last two years in Abraham Akers, some of them to win and to gain stability or prosperity inside, some of them to get protection from foreign threats, like some of the Gulf states and Iran. But in all the cases, those states were the winners and still the winners. And the loser, unfortunately, is the Palestinian cause. Now, as we know, Pakistan is still suffering from the Kashmir problem, more international pressures, and instability inside. My question to you, Mr. Imran Khan, can you assure Muslim, million of Muslims and people across the world that Pakistan and the relationship of Mr. Imran Khan will never sacrifice Palestinian rights and Jerusalem and will never normalize the relationships with the Zionist state under any excuse? Thank you.
Well, you know, the founder of Pakistan, who we call Qaidiyazam, the great leader, you know, he in 1948 gave a statement on Palestine. And he spoke about the injustice which was being done to the people of Palestine. And he was very clear that Pakistan would not accept or would not recognize Israel as long as the people of Palestine were not given justice. So that has been basically the line of all Pakistani heads of state since then. And secondly, we have, the issue of Palestine is almost exactly the same as the people of Kashmir. So the moment we give up, you know, our principle stand on the recognition of Israel means that we give up on Kashmir too, because the issues are more or less the same. The United Nations Security Council resolutions, which are more or less the same on Kashmir as well as Palestine. And, you know, if we, if we say that we, the moment we take, we recognize Israel, then we, we have abandoned the people of Palestine for them to get a just settlement for a homeland. And then it's, we cannot take a stand for the people of Kashmir either. So therefore, I don't think any Pakistani head of state will ever recognize Israel, no matter how tempting it is, because Israel is powerful in the sense it has huge influence in the United States. So United States being a superpower, every, you know, country wants to have a good relationship with them. So the temptation is that if you are friendly, if you recognize Israel, you will have good relationship with the US. But the problem in Pakistan is that it's a democratic country. And anyone who wants to go to the people, he knows that the public will never accept any head of state who's recognized Israel.
Thank you very much. We have three short questions, if you may. Thank you very much for staying with us. The next one is going to be Salman Sayed, who is professor at the University of Leeds. He is with us online. Very quickly, Dr. Sayed. You're muted.
One of your greatest achievements has been the popular mobilization of unprecedented scale in Pakistan. And I just want to ask you that how will you harness this popular will? Not just to demand new and fair elections, but also to replace the corrupt, current corrupt system inherited from, by the, from the colonizers.
You see, the problem most of the developing world, or what you call the ex-colonies, all of us, the problems we faced are the same. We have struggled to establish rule of law, justice. I mean, justice means rule of law. Rule of law means that everyone is equal before the law. And when you have colonialism, basically, the colonials are above law. And in Pakistan, unfortunately, and like most of the developing, like most of the ex-colonial countries, when they got their independence, the rulers mostly took the role of the colonizers. And they put themselves above law. And so when you have, when you do not have rule of law, corruption becomes one of the biggest symptoms of lack of rule of law. Because the powerful elite comes, goes above law, and when they start making money, the state institutions cannot check their corruption. And that's how countries become poor. Not because of lack of resources, but the corruption of the ruling elite, that bankrupts countries. And that's the case with almost in the entire developing world, it's certainly the case with Pakistan. We suffer because after colonialism, either we had military dictatorship, half the time we were ruled by military dictators. And military dictators, clearly, when they, when they take over a country, when they decide to impose martial law, they break the constitution. It's against the constitution and the rule of law. But unfortunately, when we've had civilian governments, so-called democratic governments, they also have put themselves above law, and which is why they have been able to make so much money through corruption and take the money abroad. And it's the same story in almost all the developing world. What you have in the developing countries are the ruling elites siphoning off money and taking it abroad. And that's how, you know, that's, if you ask me, one reason why Pakistan, which was rising rapidly and could not achieve its potential, should have been one of the big economies in the world? One reason is that we just did not have justice in our country. We had the ruling elite put itself above law. And when you, when you have ruling elite above law, when the powerful cannot be held accountable by your institutions of justice, then the country becomes a third world country. It becomes eventually a banana republic.
Thank you so much. I want to quickly give the floor to one of our senior professors, Dr. Munzer Kahaf, who is a professor of Islamic economics here at Istanbul Swat Tinsay University. Professor Kahaf?
Okay, thank you. Of course, I thank Sigya and I thank you, Mr. Former Prime Minister, for being with us. But I really, you mentioned about the miracle of China and other examples. And of course, things vary from one country to another. You can't really apply the same model in repeating it as it came from China, for instance. Now, what is your model? What is your program for economic development in Pakistan? And especially, I want you to also be a bit specific on a few points. How would you fight corruption? That is not really among the elite, but it had reached even the smallest employee in government or in any corporation even. And also, how would you envision the new economy in Pakistan, development-wise and Islamization-wise, especially with the Supreme Court decision of elimination of interest?
Okay, okay. Let me just say that in Pakistan, if what I was trying to do when I was in power, but only for three and a half years, and what I will again try and do, number one is imposing rule of law. Establishing rule of law is the beginning of prosperity. I believe that countries that are prosperous, if there is rule of law in a country, it cannot have poverty. If you look at the map, if you just look at the rule of law index all over the world, the countries which have rule of law index above 80 or 90% are all prosperous, have no poverty. And we, most of our countries, I mean, if you look at Nigeria, Nigeria is, has the greatest amount of oil reserves in Africa, and yet it has huge poverty. But the, on rule of law index, Nigeria is 7%. So it is directly related, if you have rule of law, you have prosperity, because it unleashes the potential of a society. You have, you have investment coming into your country. Investment always comes into countries which clean governance. And capital flies from countries which do not have governance, which don't have rule of law, which have poverty. So number one, if, and that is going to be the hardest thing to establish, number one is rule of law. And rule of law will tackle the ruling elite. But the, Professor, your other two points, you know, we, the verse in the Quran about Amar Bil Maruf, but Nahih An Al Munkar, which says, "Enjoin the good and forbid what is bad." In other words, the moral society, the moral values of a society matter a lot. Because when you make corruption unacceptable, when you stand up for the good, you know, what, strangely enough, the, some of the Western countries of Switzerland, Europe, Scandinavia, they actually work on Amar Bil Maruf. The society rejects what is bad. You know, the society fights, so corruption at the lower levels can be fought by, and what we started in Pakistan was the teachings of the Holy Prophet, Siraat al-Nabi. Because that's what teaches you ethics. And unfortunately, we haven't taught our children ethics through the Siraat al-Nabi. Because the Prophet's life, the way he established the state of Medina, the way he raised the morality of the society, the way he established the rule of law, by saying, even if my daughter steals, she will be punished. That countries before you have been destroyed, where the powerful, when they stole, were not punished and only the poor, weak crooks were punished. And this is, you know, the problem, not, I repeat, not in Pakistan, all over the developing world. And, and next is education. You see, in Muslim societies, education has to be considered sacred, as it was at the time of the Prophet. You know, we have not paid enough attention to education towards research and technology. And this is what we were, I was trying to do in Pakistan. We were going to set up excellence of center in technology, because the future is technology. But eventually, a country has to be sovereign. My, I believe that a country must stand its on feet, have dignity and self-respect, and that's what gives it strength. Because, you know, you rely on your own resources. A human being that walks on crutches, his legs will waste away. If we, the bigger weight we put, we lift, it strengthens us. Same with human societies. If you start depending on aid, which we have, and if you depend on foreign loans and IMF, you would never really learn how to stand on your own feet. So a sovereign country is the key for me for success.
Thank you so much for this. This is the last question, Mr. Prime Minister, and it's from one of our sisters and concerning the empowerment of women. Dr. Yasmeen Saheb is also a research fellow here at the Center for Islamic Global Affairs. Dr. Yasmeen?
Your Excellency, thank you so much for giving us your time today. I think it's important for us to end this discussion by addressing the question of women and women's empowerment, as we have seen recently incidents in Iran as well as in Afghanistan. Many people have argued that no matter what, Muslim countries can never give women freedom and dignity. That's some of the prevailing arguments that we hear. And so I'd like to know, how do you view this issue? And how would you, you know, accomplish this matter in a society that is quite traditional and conservative in many regards? Also, in a balanced way, without falling into what I would say, you know, Western liberal ideologies or traps even? Thank you.
Okay, so look, first of all, I do believe that, you know, the revolution, when, what our Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam did 1400, 1500 years ago was a revolution. Because he revolutionized the society. There were new concepts that came in. But one of them was, he gave rights to women. We don't, you know, we forget that long before the idea of women's rights in Western countries, 1500 years ago, rights were given to women. And in the last sermon of the Holy Prophet, he was very clear. He said, "Men have rights over women as women have rights over men." So the concept and dignity, you know, of women, so in Muslim societies, if you, if you look at Muslim societies, you know, yes, sometimes when the idea, you know, when we, the whole idea of parda is such, which, which I feel that we haven't done enough ichthihad on, enough debate on it. But the whole idea of parda, for me, was protecting the family system. Because Islam was very clear that the basis of human society is the family system. So in protecting the family system, the concept of parda came. But unfortunately, we never developed these concepts, so that we can protect our family system as well as not stop the potential of our women to grow. And Muslim societies are still developing these concepts. Unfortunately, we have two extremes right now. On one side, we have women who are in the name of parda banned from public life. On the other hand, we have the Western liberal ideas about women, women's liberation. So I believe that Islam is what we call the middle way. Islam is not a religion of extremes. It is, it says in the Quran, it's a religion of the middle way. But we haven't developed that middle way, because there has not been enough research and not enough of debate in Muslim societies of finding that middle way. I do not believe that, you know, the idea, when they say, the Western idea of the liberation of women, it's almost a competition between a man and a woman in the West now. You know, I don't think Islam is much more the idea of a complementary relationship between a man and a woman. And I, finally, I think that, that in Pakistan, in our conservative societies, I think gradually we are finding our way. But one thing that should not happen is, there's a clear verse in the Quran that there is no coercion in religion. You can't force people into religion. So if, when you do that, it doesn't, human beings have to be, the heart and the mind has to be won over. You can't force human beings through, you know, through force to follow religious addicts, and it creates problems, you know, it will always create problems. So I'm, I'm one of those who believes that it's through, through dialogue, through debate, through making people understand the true teachings of our Holy Prophet, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. I think that's the way you win over people, but not by force.
Thank you so much. Before we conclude, I just want to let you know that we received many, many questions. We tried to field some of them today. There are many other questions that we couldn't get in, hopefully. There are many other questions that we couldn't get in, hopefully in the future. But there is one question that I thought needs to be asked and it's coming from the family of Dr. Afia Siddiqui, which says, "If you come back to power as Prime Minister, can you commit to doing everything in your power to repatriate the daughter of the nation, Dr. Afia Siddiqui, within the first few months of your rule?"
Well, I can only tell the family of Afia Siddiqui that what she went through, first of all, it is tragic what she's, what she's been through, Dr. Afia Siddiqui. But I, we, we thought we came quite close to getting her released. We had negotiations going on with the US government and there was a thing of a give and take. We were trying to work out on a formula how to get her out of the US prison, but unfortunately it just didn't work out. And this was during the Trump administration. And unfortunately, when, well, I'm saying that when Trump lost the elections, the negotiations fell apart. But we were quite, I thought we were quite close at one point where we could have done a deal with the US. So we could have got her back. So, you know, the answer is yes, I'll try my best again because, you know, the US government might listen to if we do a give and take, a deal with them. But, you know, just straight asking for a freedom is not easy because they, they say, "Look, it's rule of law in the US. We have our justice system. She's been sentenced to eighty-four years in jail." And so they don't talk about, you know, there's no way Pakistan can pressure them to release her.
Inshallah will find a way. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your time. I would like to give you the final few moments for a closing statement.
Well, first of all, again, I want to thank Siga for affording me this opportunity. You know, the problem about Muslim world is that, you know, we are still evolving. We are, we are coming out of colonialism. We haven't found our feet. Our education system lags behind. We don't have great many scholars who can direct us. We have a split. We have the Westernized elites in the Muslim world who moved quite far away from the religion and don't understand much about it. And then we have a lot of conservatives who do not understand the Western thought. So, you know, the best minds right now, I find, who are sort of doing a lot of good work are scholars who are, who are living in the Western countries. I find that they are, they are coming up with some of the best ideas, they understand the Western thought and then they can compare, you know, our life, our way of thinking, our history, our culture, the Islamic principles. And some of them, I must say, some of the best work is being done in the Western countries. All Muslim scholars who've gone to the West have done research and they've come up with some great original work. What I tried to do in my last, well, in my time, last two years in my, when I was in government, I formed a Ramutul Al-Alemin Authority. It was an authority which Ramutul Al-Alemin, you know, the mercy for mankind, the title given to our Holy Prophet, peace be upon him. And the idea was that in our schools, we would teach children the life of the Prophet because the Quran tells us to learn from the life of the Prophet. And why does the Quran tell us to learn from the life of the Prophet? Because he was the most successful man in human history. No human has achieved what he has done. So our children read books on Bill Gates or, you know, all the sort of giants who've done well in business, but they need to understand the man who was the most successful person in human history. They need to learn from his life and that's why the Almighty tells us to learn from his life, to his sunnah. And I tried to teach our children about, you know, the course in the curriculum we put in the life of the Prophet. And then in the universities, we wanted our scholars to do debate on the life of the Prophet. But above all, I wanted our university students to debate that what did our Prophet Muhammad do that brought in this revolution, that changed human beings? The, the Muslims were hemmed in between two superpowers and yet between 625 and 636 AD, what were, what, three hundred and thirty in army in, in the Battle of Badr? And 636, the Roman Empire collapses in front of them at Jarmukh and then the Persian Empire. So what happened in these, in this short period which created these incredible human beings? There were, in that short space of time, there were never so many leaders. And yet, in the Muslim world, we've not done enough research on them. What did the, because it was not a, it was not something physical. It was a revolution of the minds. The Prophet changed the mindset of the people. He made them realize their potential in life. The same human beings got converted and became these great men. But what, and this is a fact of history, that between 625 to 636, in eleven years, from nothing, from a few hundred people, you know, who migrated or maybe a thousand people who migrated to Medina from Makkah, and yet from there they became the, you know, the greatest civilization of mankind. But not enough work is being done to, to tell us the, all the things, how did the Prophet change the minds? How did, it was a, it was a mind, the mindset that changed. The human beings sort of from, from as the great Rumi says, "Why do you crawl on the floor like ants when the Almighty has given you wings?" So the people of Medina, the Muslims had wings. They became these great men. And unfortunately, our young generation does not know that phenomena. And that's what I feel that our media and our scholarship and universities should concentrate on. They should find out how these human beings changed. And as I said, it's a fact of history what happened. And had it been, say, in the, had a prophet been in the Europe, European countries or Western countries, there would have been so many films on him, documentaries on his life of how he changed, how this phenomena of from nothing, these Arabs rose and became, and the Muslims became the greatest power for hundreds and hundreds of years and the greatest scientists and so on. And I think we need to, you know, when you say what happens next and for the Muslims, I think this is the most important thing that needs to be done. Our scholars need to work on, on what happened in these years in Medina. How did, how did our Holy Prophet change these human beings? That needs to be worked on.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and I want to give some final thanks to Re-Bridges who, without Mr. Majid Rafiq's help and without Dr. Arson Khalid's help, this event wouldn't have been put together. They were really bridge builders between Turkey and Pakistan. I also want to tell you that we benefited a lot from your talk and I think that you gave us a lot of insight into the future, but also I think we today gave you a chance to enter into Muslim history as someone who is the first Muslim head of state to be in a part of the Diwaniya, which is Islamic tradition, to sit with scholars, with men, with people who are thought leaders and think about problems together. It's a very unique opportunity for us all and we are, we believe in democracy, but we also believe in epistocracy, that the people who have knowledge are the ones who also help rule. The Ramutul Al-Alemin project that you proposed was very unique and hopefully in the future, Siga can collaborate with this authority to build a stronger and more dynamic Muslim world together. And we hope to see you in person in Istanbul and we hope that you have a very speedy recovery because I know that you gave us a generous time even though you're injured. I know it wasn't difficult, I know it was difficult, but thank you so much for your stamina and we pray for your recovery.
Thank you very much.